Call this common council meeting for the month of March to order, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With the clerk call roll please.
Brown, here. Evans? Foodie, here. Grattan?
Here.
Merle's, here. Schuster?
Here.
First item of business is the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Oh.
Motion by Schuster, second by Grattan. All in favor?
Aye.
Close, carried. Prove the minutes of the previous meetings. I move, motion by Merle's?
Second.
Second by Foodie. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Prove minutes of intervening meetings.
I move.
Motion by Brown?
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Communications, do you have anything for us tonight? Megan? We have an announcement for the Dodge County Housing Board. How about that?
Oh, yep.
Don't want to steal your thunder?
I know. So, um, the Dodge County Housing Authority did get approved for ten million, six hundred thousand something for, um, cozing on Western Avenue. So, um, I've been working with Donna and her and I will be submitting our audit paperwork from last year because ours isn't completed quite yet. So, they requested that by Friday and I submitted that today, so we should be set for that.
Good.
Yep.
Any questions? Shot in the arm for Juno. The housing development that they're going to promote out there certainly paid off in Horicon and I expect the same here in Juno. So if it all goes well. Next we have approved payments of bills. Checks for seven hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-three cents. There are no vouchers. Electronic transfers, four hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents. Is there a motion to approve the payment of bills?
I move.
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Merle's. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Merle's?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Payments of bills have been approved. Reports of officials, mayor, resolution seventy-three, two thousand twenty-one. Whereas the city of Juno is hereby required by Wisconsin statute sixteen point five-two-seven, print six, print B, to approve facsimile signatures. And whereas the city of Juno has reviewed the following facsimile signatures and recommends approval of these facsimile signatures. Dan Wagner, Megan Buhta, Buhta.
Buhta.
Now therefore be resolved that the common council, city of Juno, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council this city of Juno this eighth day of March, two thousand twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve resolution seventy-three, twenty, twenty-one?
I think the passage of resolution seventy-three, two thousand twenty-one?
Motion by Schuster?
Second.
Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all, oh, roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Merle's?
Aye.
Resolution seventy-three, twenty, twenty-one is approved. For treasure. Got any, anything else to report? I can't help you out in both categories.
Well, uh, the payroll training will be starting, uh, March twenty-ninth and thirtieth. Um, so we'll be busy with that. Our getting ready for the elections. We got our absentee ballots. Uh, we're working with Karen doing a training, um, testing our machines, uh, next week. And we have additional training at Dodge County, um, the twenty-fifth. So, busy, busy up here. Uh, the ARPA funds requests from Dodge County, they have sent out additional questions that they would like answered. Um, so the original four, uh, requests that we had made, um, we, one was Dodge County Housing Authority, so that one, um, the mayor and I decided to poll. Uh, so I've been working on that and those are due Monday, so I'm hoping, hoping to submit them within the next couple of days.
Any questions for the clerk? Seeing none, moving on. Written reports, the billing permit report, police department report, Juno Fire and Rescue, and the Juno EMS report. Are there any questions on them? Seeing none, we'll move on. Um, question. We do not have a, any item on here for citizens' comments or questions regarding the agenda items? I'm assuming this young lady is possibly here for that?
I'm here for the sidewalk cafe.
Just a resolution cafe.
Okay, well, then we'll cover.
Cover that later.
I'll definitely allow you to speak on that since we don't have. We usually have an agenda item where the public can speak.
Yeah, sorry about that. I think I just got confused with communications.
Trying to save paper, I suppose.
Yeah, no, definitely not. Sorry about that.
Next we have the reports committees, commissions, and boards. We have our favorite librarians in that round here.
Oh, don't let those other librarians hear that.
To woo us, to woo us?
Wow.
Wow us, wow us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Going out on a date with her, she's wooing me.
Oh my, oh no.
I'm waiting here.
Golly, it's being recorded and everything. Oh, golly, it's March. We are, I know, yeah. So, in March, I've just brought some props. This is same song, you know, second verse. We have movies back in the library, so we just showed Monday night, last night, American Underdog. And then our next adult movie in two weeks will be A Journal for Jordan. And so these are on Monday nights, they begin at six. And, um, although the library closes at seven, we do keep our meeting room open until that movie is complete. Freshly popped popcorn and, um, just a good date night. Please bring Phil's. Yeah, otherwise people will talk. And then this Thursday, uh, we will be showing Space Jam: A New Legacy. This is not Michael Jordan, um, from the nineties, but we're showing this because it's March Madness, right? You gotta have a little bit of basketball. And then, um, all our favorite big red dog, Clifford, became a, uh, movie in theaters and is now released on DVD. So we'll show that on March twenty-fourth. You can find out about these on our Facebook page or our website and of course our paper signage as well. I just brought an example of seven new boxes that we are partnering with the Aging and Disability Resource Center. Um, these are boxes they've had available for people to check out from the ADRC for several years and they're just not getting traffic. So they thought if they were in the library, people might see them more. And so these can circulate throughout all of our libraries. We are thirty-two libraries strong. This is just an example of something, maybe you have someone in your family who's struggling with dementia, and you are looking for a way to engage with them. And you know that sometimes those memories are there. And so these things can drum up some conversation points with your loved one. This one's called In the Garden, so we've got gardening tools and just some simple activities that you can engage in and, um, just reminisce with your loved one. Like I said, there's seven of these and they are being catalogued this week and they'll be available at the library. This is something not just for, uh, that demographic, like you might want to check those out and use them with your children to engage conversations as well. So, just an awesome resource. I think I shared with you last month that we're starting to build a library of things. We have books, we have DVDs, we have audio books, and now we have things. We, as an American public, um, collect a lot of stuff. And, um, I've been to the Grattan home, I know they love board games. And part of me is like, I now know I'll call Dave before I buy a board game and go, hey, can I borrow your board game? Well, why not do that in the library? We are starting to collect board games. This one actually, I checked out and my husband and I played it. We're highly competitive. This was actually voted as the top board game for two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, it's, it's a unique game. You have catapults and you shoot balls and it's, it's, it's a good time. So, we have this and then we have just the latest and greatest in, uh, card games, Exploding Kittens. And we have probably about fifteen newer board games. And then we are starting to catalog, catalog a lot of the classics as well. Monopoly, Connect Four, Life, some of those that we've had. So that you don't have to go out and buy these and let them collect dust in your house. So, um, right now in March, we have a scavenger hunt going on. Uh, if you complete, if you find the gold coins and complete this riddle, then you win a prize. If you find our four-leaf clover, you win an additional prize. I still want you to come in and do it, but I have tattoos for all of you. So, take a tattoo and, um, wear it on St. Patrick's Day. Oh goodness, you never know, do you, what I'm bringing? And then last but not least, I'm really excited about this. Um, April is National Library Month. And the Friends of the Juno Public Library really want to make that a big deal. The whole month is National Library Month. And then there's a specific week where it's National Library Week. And, um, that is April third through the ninth. Well, the Friends group is going to sponsor a tiny art show. So, starting next Monday on the fourteenth of March, you can come in and get your little easel and, um, just a starter kit. And we want you to design some art. We don't care what medium it is. Some people might use watercolors, some might use acrylics, oils, glitter, whatever, and tell us why you love your library. And that's up to interpretation, isn't that the beauty of art? So these, you have two weeks to make your art and then we will have our art gallery on display, um, during National Library Week. Uh, we have some very talented friends of the library that are going to make little, um, easels and things to put our canvases on and, um, so you could draw a stick person on there if you wanted. Yeah, stick your tattoo on there, I don't know. But, think about that and encourage people to come and get their art kit. Because, um, libraries are essential and they are important and we know people love their library. Any questions for us? No, Cheryl's like, I'm overwhelmed.
Yeah, a lot of people coming like movies.
We, Monday, of course, we had that snow, but it was, it was awesome. Um, a few couples came and one of the couples, she had seen American Underdog twice in the theater and then it said, come on, big brother, you need to come and see this with me. And, um, that was fun because, you know, when you think of what you pay to go to a theater and buy popcorn and bulk of those were provided, um, that, so we are, we showed Encanto, which is the latest Disney movie, two weeks ago for children, and it had a large-sized group there. Disney's a draw. All right, good question. All right. I want you to have your space back.
Thank you. The kids sang along with the songs, didn't they?
Oh, they did, including the adults. And I would like to publicly thank, uh, Dave Grattan for helping us build some shelves for storage for the Juno Public Library as well. Um, they're beautiful and they're useful and they're needed. And, um, thank you, Dave, so much for your labor and love of the library.
No other questions for agenda? Move on, plan commission, David.
Plan commission, we did meet. We had a gentleman named Jeremy Johnson. He approached us, wanted a conditional use permit for keeping bees at feet five fifty North Fairfield. Um, we, he was not able to attend that meeting, so we're going to meet next month and talk with him and get the questions answered that the committee came up with. Couldn't be answered because he wasn't there. Then we, the library presented the tuck-reed play structure that's going to be placed on the library grounds. And, uh, that, uh, we made a motion and that was carried seven to zero. So, that was passed. And we discussed some property maintenance issues around town that needed looking at. That was our meeting.
Any questions for Dave? On that beekeeping, did the applicant get invited to the last?
He did not. When he came in originally, he, um, asked if he had to be there and at that point I said it's up to you.
Okay. I guess.
He was aware of the date.
Okay, anytime that does happen, encourage him to be there unless, or at least have somebody appear in their behalf because from what I sense from the group, he would have gotten approval, but there were still some questions that they wanted to ask.
Um, I did reach out to him the day after the meeting and he will be at the next one. And then I sent him a copy of the ordinance as well.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Dave? Seeing none, moving on, finance committee.
We did not meet, however, we are moving into construction season, particularly for Highland Street and East Oak Construction. And we're not necessarily happy with the amount of money that this project could be. Um, the fact that we can get in on it now is probably better than a few months. So, um, we do have a resolution and then we can discuss it from there. Resolution seventy-four, twenty, twenty-one. Award construction bid for Highland Street and East Oak Street reconstruction. Whereas the city of Juno, Wisconsin, did advertise and receive sealed bids for the two thousand twenty-two Highland East Oak Street Reconstruction Project. And whereas six bids were received and are on file with the city engineer, as shown in exhibit A and summarized below. Copeland Keenan's Company, one million, twenty-two, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Under construction, one million, seventy-three thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars and twenty-four cents. Advanced construction, one million, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty cents. Forest landscaping and construction, one million, ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents. The Chesky Construction, one million, one hundred and sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars and forty-nine cents. Wolfski Construction, one million, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Whereas a public hearing was held on Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two, but it's a hearing on interest of parties concerning matters related to the proposed assistance for this project. Therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juno, Wisconsin, thereby awards construction there for the Highland East Oak Street project. Copeland Keenan's Incorporated, Green Lake, Wisconsin, ran out not to exceed one million, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-two dollars and twenty-five cents. Passed by the common council of the city of Juno, as of early March, two thousand twenty-two. And will pro passage of resolution seventy-four, twenty, twenty-one.
Motion by Brown?
Second.
Second. Second by Grattan. Any further discussion? We delayed this project by a year. I think it shook out to about a savings of about sixty thousand dollars, if I recall, with the previous little bid. Last year we only had one bidder. So it is nice to know that, uh, most of these contractors are figuring apples for apples here because the bidding was very tight. At the time you were talking, only a fifty thousand dollar difference between a little bidder and the next one makes you feel good that you should be getting a quality job. Public hearing was held on February eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Didn't have one on two thousand twenty-two.
We did second public hearing. In February.
Is there anybody in attendance?
Jason Lau was here, remember that?
Oh, for, held it here.
Yeah.
We didn't have a neighborhood meeting like, like what we did in, prior to the, the bid letting last year.
Oh.
Yeah, we had a community meeting down at the, down at the community center. It was probably around February of, of two thousand twenty-one.
Okay.
Where the public was able to chime in and get information on, on, uh,
Okay.
what the project was comprised of and whatever. Just as a reminder, this is not the complete Oak Street project. This is only phase one of the Oak Street. It only goes from Highland to Depot. This does not include the stretch from Highland to the east to the dead end. This is what was proposed over a year ago and elected to hold to see if we could get a more competitive bid for the following year. So everybody's aware of that. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Merle's?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Any other questions for Cheryl? Moving on, personnel, okay?
We did not meet.
Moving on, public safety.
We got a meeting. We had a citizen complain about some, uh, parking issues and noise issues by our neighbors, so we directed Dave Veal to look into that. He's going to report next month on that. Uh, he also talked about that, uh, structure, the house had structured fire in South Fairfield. Been there a long time since August. He said the owners are processing getting some bids to tear it down. And we talked about maybe some, getting some kind of ordinance that, you know, these buildings shouldn't stay, sit this long before they get taken care of. Kind of an ice order. So we're going to look into that. The new officer, Dylan Townsend, was it, showed up and met him. And Dave said he's in training, field training, and doing a good job. And then we also discussed the sidewalk cafe ordinance. Um, and we decided to extend the time from October first to November first. And I got the resolution on that. Because we want to do it, another resolution, set an ordinance, because only one, eighteen fifty, was the only one that participated. Want to get some more participation, see if there's any other questions or before we get ordinance, because then you got to change stuff and do a lot of stuff with that. So, we thought maybe just another year, see how it, see how it works. And, uh, Dave also brought up crossing guards. We're in dire need of crossing guards. They're short and they're, people don't show up and the police got to cover it. So if anybody, knows anybody want to be a crossing guard, they're definitely looking for some of them. And we talked about, you know, if we can't get them, we may have to get some lights or something, especially on twenty-six there. But I think a person out there is a lot better than a light. I mean, for, for kids and stuff to interact with them and, I mean, people pay attention more to a person out there than, than lights, I would think. So hopefully we can get that taken care of. And, um, those all the things had, police report. EMS, Dan Zink, handed out his, uh, monthly report and had his officers elected. I got a resolution on that also later. Same with the fire chief, he handed his report out and got some new officers for the year. And with the police chief, we also talked about auto aid with Horicon and Burnett. Like all departments in Dodge County were having problems, you know, getting people. Everybody's short, especially during the day. So I got a resolution to help, um, Horicon and Burnett and Juno are going to be together. One call, everybody goes on it and it's worked out pretty good for others. If you don't need them, you call them off right away. You get there, if you don't need the other departments, you call them off, say you don't need to be, but, you know, we're going to, everybody's so short during the day, so. And right now Horicon and Burnett work together, so we're just going to have Juno join them, them two departments, so. So hopefully that works out well. Get a resolution on that later. And that was about all I have for the meeting. So I have some resolutions.
Oh, well, which one you got first here?
Um, the auto aid.
The auto aid, we'll wait until we get into the sidewalk cafe.
Yep. Uh, resolution seventy-five, twenty, twenty-one, approve automatic aid agreement with Horicon and Burnett Fire Departments. Whereas the public safety committee has reviewed the agreement between the city of Juno and the cities of Horicon and Burnett to provide fire service. And two of the three agencies are short on manpower. And whereas the public safety committee recommends to approve the automatic aid agreement with Horicon and Burnett, as shown in exhibit A. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juno accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juno to Saint Day of March, two thousand twenty-two. And move for passage of resolution seventy-five, twenty, twenty-one?
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Foodie?
Motion by Schuster, second by Foodie.
Any further discussion?
John, I have a question on this and I'm, I'm all for it. How does it do as far as rotating, um, you know, does, does it rotate, you know, which two are called first or?
No, if it's Juno's call, they'll page Juno and everybody will page together. Burnett and Horicon, everybody will be paged together. If you've got a house fire, a car accident, and then if we get out there, we got enough people, we can call them off, say, you're not needed. So, yep, no, everybody gets called at the same time.
I didn't know if, you know, it was who's coming first or is one.
Well, it depends who's, you know, if it's Burnett's territory, they usually get paged first.
Right.
And then Horicon, then Juno. But then, yeah.
This, everybody's being called.
Everybody's being called because you never know who's around and what, what you need, you know.
The tones on our pagers or on our phones will sequence. First Burnett will be called and Horicon and Juno. Juno, Horicon, Burnett.
So whoever got a call, everybody will get paged.
Yep, sure.
For the call.
So, there's only a short time lapse between each department knowing, you know, that they're being called. And as far as economics, um, if we don't leave the station, our firemen don't get paid. So.
Yeah, we did that a few years ago. If the truck don't leave the, the station, we don't get paid, you know, put on the response, so.
Okay, but if you're en route, you get paid for that?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Is the, is, I, I did notice in this that, you know, the, everyone's responsible for their own people. Are our wages about the same as the other two communities that?
Horicon and Juno are very comparable. Burnett is not. Burnett, uh, doesn't have the, the means.
Yep.
So, they're compensated otherwise. They've got a retirement program that they involve their people into. They're probably one of the last true volunteer fire departments around. Most of us are all classified as paid on call. So in other words, we go, but you're not held hostage at home on any given weekend or anything like that. You know, you don't have a shift you have to. You're on twenty-four seven, but you're not obligated to be around. You can go on vacation.
You're not like EMS where they got people that have to be in town, where you, EMS, you know.
And EMS has been doing this with Horicon for a little while now and it's worked out very well. Because, uh, both, like John said, in every small community, people don't work in town anymore. You know, so many of the people are working farther away or not even close to being able to respond or allowed to respond. So hopefully this will cure things.
I think there's only like one department in Dodge County that don't help any.
Horicon and Bee, or, uh, Wapon, Lebonon, and Beaverdam would be the only ones that aren't cooperating with other people right now. Of course they have Wapon and Beaverdam on full-time fire duty as well, so.
Hopefully it works all good for us, so.
Step in the right direction.
Yeah, we definitely need some help, so.
No other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Grattan?
Aye.
Merle's?
Aye.
Resolution seventy-five, twenty, twenty-one is passed.
Excuse me, next resolution I have is for the appointment of the fire officers. Resolution seventy-six, twenty, twenty-one. Approve appointment of the fire department officers. Whereas the Juno Fire Department has a general election for the fire, fire department of office, offices. The following officers will be named to office with their term beginning in February, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas the following are the election results. Curtis Minman, chief, five years. Ed Weiss, captain, fill in to end the term. Jay Scolma, trustee, two years. Joel Scolma, secretary treasurer, two years. Now therefore be resolved, the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of March, 2022. I move for passage of resolution 76, 2021.
Motion by Schuster, second by Brown. Any further discussion? If none, roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
Resolution 76, 2021 is passed.
Next resolution I have is for appointment of EMS officers. Resolution 77, 2021, approve appointment of EMS officers. Whereas emergency medical service, EMS has a general election for EMS office. The following officers will be filled in named office with their term beginning in February 2022. Dan Zank, coordinator, two years. Dan Toll, secretary treasurer, two years. Whereas EMS bylaws require that the common council of the city of Juneau confirm EMS elections. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of March, 2022. I move for resolution 77, 2021.
Motion by Schuster, second by Braden. Any further discussion? If none, roll call vote.
Schuster?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
Just like to commend Dan Zank for the time that he spends on the, as coordinator and covering for all the vacancies or all the open shifts that can't be covered by our, I think they're down to 12 people right now.
Dan goes on a lot of calls.
He goes on a lot of calls. I mean, he, he's held hostage in this community for many, many weekends just because he, he doesn't have the, the troops within the ranks to be able to fill, fill that capacity. So by all means, if anybody's out there that wants to do public service, I mean, even driving the ambulance, I mean, they'll welcome you aboard and, uh, if you want to pursue becoming the EMT, the city forks all, or covers all costs and, um, we certainly would appreciate your help. Roll call vote, please. Oh, you did that.
Great. Next resolution is, uh, cafe ordinance for resolution? Resolution 80, 2021, approve the creation of a pilot program to allow sidewalk cafes for one year. Whereas the Public Safety Committee has reviewed the application conditions and restrictions for businesses to apply for a sidewalk cafe permit. And whereas the Public Safety Committee recommends to establish a pilot program for one year to see how much interest is generated and to work out any conditions or restrictions that may, have been seen at this time. And whereas the Public Safety Committee recommends a fee of $15 to cover administration costs to process the application and res. Proceeding?
Groshers.
Groshers.
Sorry. An application that's shown in Exhibit A will be sent out to individual business to promote the sidewalk cafe. Now therefore be resolved if the common council of the city of Juneau accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of March, 2022. I move for passage of resolution 80, 2021.
Motion by Schuster, second by Foodie. Any further discussion?
I know we did do a pro, pilot program last year and we thought instead of going into ordinance where you have to change stuff, if something comes up, I mean, like I said, only one, 1850 is only one business participated. So we're going to see if we get some more interest in it and go from there. The only, the only thing they had a question on was, uh, outdoor flame heating. They didn't want that out there. I think that was the only.
Exposed flame.
Exposed flame, the only concern that they had. Otherwise, I think it went real well, so. Don't you have any, anything to say or?
Well, I do appreciate the pilot program last year. It definitely brought new customers in that normally would not come in because we are a bar. Now we're a bar restaurant, so it's even better for us. So we very much appreciate that and we definitely want to do it again. I really want to be more a part of this, but unfortunately my dad is dying, so I've been caring for him. But the only thing that I'd really like to change is, I know that it's going to be approved till November this year.
November 1st, yep. So you've got that Halloween thing you said you wanted to have, yep?
Yes, so which I wanted last year, but I.
Yep.
I know I asked back then, like, it'd be nice to just have it available from April 1st till November 1st because then it's like, when you can park outside, we would have it available, not necessarily that we would set it up right away because the weather is permitting, right? So we had a lot of days that we didn't use it because it was raining and it only covers a portion. So, and, um, the seating, the cushions we bring in so people don't want to just sit in the rain.
True.
So even though we have a partial coverage, uh, we don't plan to use it every day, but we do want to have it as an option from April 1st because we do have some really nice days in April that I would prefer not to lose. So that's the only thing that I would like to see is, and it's going to be easier to tell customers too, well, if you can't park outside overnight, we're not going to have it. So when that's no longer the case, then we'll have it. But definitely a lot of, I didn't have any negative feedback from customers or even people walking by that we had a little dog bowl for water. So that area was where people could sit with their pet also. So it worked out really nice for us.
Yeah, I've done, but positive comments from people. I think that they did a nice job as far as crowding the, the seating area and, uh, yeah, I think it's just something we want to promote. Might bring some more people into town and certainly help your business and others. So, you know, I'm all, I'm all for it.
I definitely wish more businesses would do it. I think the biggest advantage we have is we don't have our building up on our property line, so we have extra space. But, um, I know Brad wants to do a remodeling for his place where he can actually have, I mean, his inside is not a lot of space inside, but he can definitely expand forward if the city allows it. I think it's very nice.
And I commend you for maintaining that five or six feet off the curb so it doesn't impede anybody walking up and down the street or whatever. I think all your patrons have been, been very civil and there hasn't been any issues as far as the police department's concerned.
I mean, I'm very proud of my customers because they actually patrolled, patrolled it better than I did. So as soon as they saw somebody smoking, they'd be like, no, you can't smoke in here and.
It's good.
Yeah, yeah. Dave said, police chief, there's no, no issues at all, so that he was aware of, so, yep.
Uh, there's just one thing I wanted to, um, get clarified. Uh, I'm at the extension of premise application. It just says that it needs to be approved by council. I was speaking with Dave, the last process, they went through public safety and then planning commission or planning commission. Is that still the road that we want to take? Or since she's just reapplying, does it just need to go through council?
I think as long as she's a repeat and her, her layout doesn't change, it doesn't have to go back to plan commission.
Plan commission, no.
Public safety, the only critique they had was when they had an open flame.
Yep.
Whatever you call it.
Yeah, the cable.
Yeah. And, uh, that is strictly against fire code. So, you know, that was nixed and they promptly did away with that, so. We talked about the, the radiant heaters, you know, for those months where you're.
Cold.
Yeah, kind of in between and what have you. And as long as they don't have exposed flame where that's in compliance with the fire code and what have you, so. So, yeah.
So just a question since you're here. If we had, uh, something that covered it, like, I don't know, like, I don't know what it's called, the covers, that would go over the flame, would that make a difference? Because that's pretty much the same then as those outdoor.
I think we talked, it should go through the fire inspector to make sure.
Yeah, yeah. If there's, you got any questions about what you, what's allowed and what isn't allowed? That might be a gray area.
I just want to add something as well. So what was actually added, um, and this was looked at by the city attorney as well, that a number eight and number nine, the number eight was no open flame heat or cooking appliances are permitted without pre-approval of the city fire inspector. And number nine, the storage of LP liquid petroleum gas tanks must be properly secured and locked. So that's what was added from the last, um, the last packet that was approved.
True.
For the last pilot program.
So keep in mind, if you're going with those, those umbrella type heaters, um, at the end of the day, you have to secure that LP tank somewhere's on your premise so that those bottles aren't exposed to anybody that wants to go up there and break open a valve or anything. And you can't store them inside.
Can't put them inside.
You're going to have to find someplace in the rear of the building or something like that to store. If you're lucky to do that, maybe you're not even doing that.
The table we have is lockable, so like, there's a drawer that comes out and it's lockable. And I think that would be, that would work, right?
Yeah, water, what kind of, if you had a propane tank out there?
It is.
Okay. So that's secure.
Like for the astral, it's the same thing.
Okay.
If you want, I can get you a copy of this updated too, if you want to stop in Toyota or something.
Yeah, those are basically the only two changes.
Yep. Those are the things they had. Fire stopped, the open flame, so. Everything else is fine, so.
So if they were to decide to change their design, then it has to go back to plan commission?
Yes.
And it would have to go, so if you're changing your layout.
Altering their footprint.
No, we have it marked, yeah.
No, I think they did very well.
Yeah, looked good, so.
Looks attractive, the people drive by and whatever, that's all we can ask. Any other questions, comments? And the pilot program, I suggested go back to the attorney because I wanted to make sure that doing a second year was acceptable or.
Right.
Was in good taste or not, you know, not that we run a pilot program for 10 years or anything like that.
Right, but I think right now it makes sense.
Yeah, because I mean, wasn't a whole lot of participation, so if we want to change anything else or?
Right. And there are some places like Tyrenine and Lake Mills, when you go to that microbury, they use their outside area year-round. But I don't know if you've ever seen how they've set it up where it's heated, they have all these ceiling heaters coming down from the ceiling. And it really heats it up to the point where you can go out there if it's 10 above or so.
That's probably what we would be looking to do too. It just, you know, everyone likes a campfire, so it looks nice. But, you know, I will definitely talk to fire department and see what we can do. But the dates is my main reason for being here is I don't know how to go about.
Where are we now?
Suggesting that April.
I guess there's nothing in the resolution for the date, but.
The resolution for last year was from June till October.
Oh, okay.
Announces April 1st to November 1st.
Right. Announce April 1st.
And that's because it took us a while to get all that.
Big work.
Yeah, right.
And that was what you were asking for, correct? April to November?
Yeah.
And that's what this is approved.
Yep. Unless it gets voted out. No other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Schuster?
Aye.
Foodie?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Braden?
Aye.
Merle?
Aye.
There you go. Resolution 80, 2021 is passed.
Good night.
Thank you.
And that's all ahead for public safety. I don't see any questions.
Public Works, David.
Public Works. We discussed digging a ditch on Western Avenue on Dale Kreitzner's land to the east of Whisper at the end of Kitten Street and Western Avenue at that intersection. The water, the pipe runs out that the, the water running off the roof and parking lot off of Whisper goes off and towards Dale Kreitzner's property to the west. He'd like us to dig a ditch across his property to get to the main ditch. And we wanted to discuss with him that, uh, he would share half of the cost of the ditch, seeing that ditch would also, uh, help get rid of the water on his property as well. The other properties we had dug from the city all the way out to 26th, south of Juneau, those property individuals shared the cost when we did that project some years back. I don't, I don't know exactly, I don't remember how many years back it was before I was chair of the committee. But that cost was shared, so it would only be reasonable to have Dale share the cost across his land, so we'll be discussing that. All, all business, call refrigeration is going to be, giving Scott a 15-day cost estimate for the walk-in cooler, um, at the community center. We're still working on that. It's still running fine, so we're not under the gun yet, but we got to do something because of the age of the equipment. Then there was the superintendent's report about snow removal. I think that the city's done well with it. As well as with some of the uneven streets we have here and there, that I think they did real well. That was our meeting. If anybody's got any questions? And I have a resolution to read. This is about the money for the tires. Some of the people that dropped their tires off in the past have not been coming up to City Hall to pay for the tires. And then that money was supposed to, that bill was supposed to have gotten on their taxes. Well, with all the, all the things going on in City Hall, that has been being overlooked evidently, so what we're going to do is, uh, what we had discussed is that we collect the money down at the city garage. So a small safe was bought and they're going to put some cash in there for change and for the customer. And so then on Mondays, you know, when you come up with time sheets, for example, you bring that money along from, from the weekend or whenever they came in. So that way there, the monies would be there in, in the account to help pay to get rid of the tires. So for how long now, the money has been coming out of his budget rather than out of this account that was set up to collect the money in. Resolution 78, dash 2021, approve payment collection for waste tires at city dump. Whereas the city of Juneau recommends that the city dump collect payment for waste tires upon arrival. And whereas a standard fee of $5 per tire will be collected and a customer receipt will be filled out by the dump attendant. And whereas the dump attendant will take, take change bag and fees collected and place it in a lock safe to later be deposited and rece, and receipted at the city, Juneau City Hall. And now therefore be it resolved that the common council of the city of Juneau accept the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of March, 2022. I move for passage of resolution 78, 2021.
Second.
Motion by Braden, second by Merle. Any further discussion?
What do we do with the tires?
Make it sold and made into the chips that have been, put around some of the play equipment.
Does the $5 cover that cost to have them for them or are we charged anything for them for me to pick up tires and?
That's the disposal charge. They charge us the $5 per tire to, they don't buy them. We pay them to take them and then when we want those tires, we buy them back.
Do we foresee them changing that rate?
If they do, we have to change that. But the $5 has been that way for many years. But the five dollars has been that way for many years.
I do have something to add there, I talked to Scott about that, the five dollar fee, and he said that it costs the city of Juneau two dollars and twenty-five cents to dispose of a tire. So they're profiting a little bit.
I mean, you said something about this invoice is not being put on the tax rule. I'd have to check, but I don't think it's an item that can be put on the tax rule. I think it's only services and who owns on your property, I don't think it can.
I wanted to, I wanted to touch base on that too.
Yeah.
Not that it's been overlooked, it's just, you know, people just haven't been paying the invoice, so they just keep occurring a little bit of interest, you know, every month, so by the time we're sending out an invoice for, you know, a pass to balance, you know, it's true. All that work for, you know, a small amount of money, is, you know, it's just like, we'll just take the money right away, and then, you know, it's just cleaner, we've made one deposit, you know, so it's just a lot of whole, a lot of extra work that doesn't really need to be done, so.
The issue about collecting cash down at the city garage is gonna have to be bonded. I thought that was always an issue when you're in government and you're.
Usually you would, except, how much cash is he typically gonna be collecting?
You're talking like forty to fifty dollars.
He would, they were talking about having fifty dollars in his safe, that would be his change fund, and then they would drop off, like, they dropped off tire money on Monday. He put it directly in our Dropbox Saturday after the dump.
How much was there?
There was twenty-five dollars there.
Technically it's supposed to be bonded, your expense with bonding is probably not worth it.
Just that it doesn't get us in trouble.
Right. I'll double check, let me double check, generally the rule is any money you're collecting, you gotta be bonded.
I suppose the other solution is just refuse taking tires.
And you had a lot more in the road.
Yeah.
Throw more defense.
Not a good answer, yeah.
Or throw more defense.
Throw more defense. It's tough, here it is. And like, be assured with petroleum prices going up, that's gonna affect those tire recycling too. Okay. Any other thoughts? You wanna take action on that, or you wanted him to review this further as far as bonding issue?
The reality is we're already doing it ten minutes in, and then we have to still bond.
Motion on the floor, and second, any further discussion, say none, roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Earl?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution seventy-eight twenty twenty-one is passed. Anything else for Public Works?
Yep, did you talk about the next Wednesday, dump opening is just open Saturday now?
Yeah, that was last month.
Is that last month?
That was last month.
You know, we open on Saturday, not every other Saturday, correct?
Well, first and third.
First and third, Saturday, yeah, no more during the week.
Sorry, Dave.
You're right, first and third.
Kay, Cable TV, Jane?
We had no meeting and no report.
Committee, CDA committee, nothing to report there. Recreation Committee, Kay?
We did meet, we discussed the balance about recreation as from the borrowing that was done a couple of years ago, and put forth some ideas, and one is some upgrades to the Wild Goose Park. And that's being looked into, assigned in the park, and so Ashton is looking at some things that have been brought up in the past as needed in the recreation department, and will get back to us. We also approved termination probation period, which I will read a resolution later. We approved Ashton to attend the statewide convention for rep directors, and we talked about the talk, read, play space that will be going on the library grounds. The library board was all for it, and we have the placement worked out, and so everybody's on board with that, at the play space. The fitness court should be up and running sometime in July, that's going forward. And that's, that's about it. Ashton is running an Easter egg hunt on the sixteenth, I believe. So, you know, tell your grandkids, your neighborhood kids, we got an Easter egg hunt right here in the city of Juneau. So, come to the community center, I think the fire partner's helping out, or if you've got something else to do.
Yeah, I think they talked about it, yeah.
Yeah, so, it's all good, it's all good, we're gonna have fun. So I have a resolution, um, resolution seventy-nine twenty twenty-one, approve to remove Ashton, well, I don't know how to pronounce her last name, Zine, from probation. Whereas the Recreation Committee has reviewed the probationary performance review for Ashton Zine, and whereas the Recreation Committee recommends that Ashton Zine be removed from probation effective three fifteen twenty twenty-two, receive the approved step increase to year two at twenty dollars and eight cents per hour, and therefore be it resolved that the common council, the city of Juneau, accepts the aforementioned recommendation passed by the common council of the city of Juneau this eighth day of March twenty twenty-two. I would move for passage of resolution seventy-nine twenty twenty-one, second.
Motion by Merle, second by Brown, any further questions?
I just personally think that Ashton is doing a great job at recreation, she is really enthusiastic in, and thinking of new things to do for the city, and I think she's a great addition to our crew here. So, we hope she enjoys her time here at the city.
I think she's getting very comfortable even speaking to departments, or to our council members and what have you. I can remember the first time she came aboard, she was pretty tongue-tied, but she's getting real comfortable now, and meshing in real good, and like Kay says, she's got a lot of good ideas, she's always bringing new ideas to the table, and obviously knows how to write grants, because she's done a few dollars for the city for some of this stuff, so, yeah, and she likes her job. I think that's, that's imperative, you know, to have an happy employee in that capacity, so, yeah, I endorse her as well.
I'm just wondering the resolution, if it should make some reference to, was it like, recreation and personnel? They recommended ending her probationary period, they went through personnel also, right?
No, it doesn't have to go through personnel. You can go right from recreation here, because we streamlined that a couple of years ago.
I just wanted, now is the time to ask.
No other questions, roll call vote, please.
Earl?
Aye.
How's?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Gatten?
Aye.
Schuster?
Aye.
Resolution seventy-nine twenty twenty-one is passed. Anything else, Kay?
Nope, does anybody have any other questions?
Utility Commission report.
It's not here.
Saw you taking notes like a.
All of a sudden, I was like, oh yeah, it's not here, I get to take it. Things are moving forward at the, at the Utility Commission, we did meet last night, as a matter of fact, had some business to take care of. Greg Gunderson of MSA and Matt Steele from MSA were there with us last night, and I handed out to each of you the wastewater treatment facility, the kind of a mock-up picture of where we're going. Our wastewater treatment facility is in much need of upgrade and repair. It was to last a much shorter time than it has, but we have now come to the point that we must make some improvements. And so this is the, the site plan that they're thinking of, it is not set in stone, there are certain things that may be moved to different places. The maintenance garage is planned for twenty-five hundred square feet, may end up only be fifteen hundred square feet, depends upon layout and what the needs are, once they do some further things. We did approve last night to go ahead and start with the design and engineering of this, to make sure that we have everything we need and are, are moving forward with that. So that was the first thing that, that happened with our meeting last night, questions were asked, questions were answered. The information was handed out to us specifically for this. We then looked at the actions affecting utility, and was a question I wanted to vote, because we did take action and change the, one day, no longer is a holiday, in the, under the holidays, and must be, employees must be here for a full year, there was concern about that, and it's still there, but real discussion was had on that, but nonetheless, that was, that was put there. Total delinquent customers, by the way, we still need you to pay your bills. It's not free to run the utilities. And so, I know right now there's a moratorium, you don't have to by law, but I'm asking you to pay your bills and be responsible in the city in general, because it still is money, and it still belongs to the city for the service that you use. If you need help, there are services available, and if you need that help to get those paid, certainly call the utility office, and they can connect you with resources there for getting that paid. But not to pay the bill is not an acceptable answer, and the moratorium will come off, and we will disconnect if it's not paid and brought up into compliance. So, I know we're still a little ways out from that, but keep that in mind. And my famous pitch, flushable wipes are non-flushable, it still messes up our system, particularly right now with our aging system, there are some streams, and that causes problems at our lift stations, and that's dollars and that's money, that's labor, and we're asking you, please, again, be responsible for that. As far as the electric utility, we did have a bump in, in our service. There was some activity that was happening by the ATC, and they found that they had not completed something, which then affected us here. The city had a blip, and we were able to say, yep, it's not us that happened, made this happen, but make sure that things were online. There were some voltage issues that were fixed, and new service on Depot Street has been requested to consolidate and upgrade, they were just asking for a estimate at this point in time. Our back trailer had some problems, and an old ring has to be fixed, and they're working on that. They're still working with AT&T and Charter on the East Oak project. Right now Charter is holding us up for getting all the approvals to do what we need to do, is a pre-rep work for the upcoming roadwork, and they, Nick is still working with them to get them to keep working. So wastewater treatment plant, they had to have some, they had to have new variable frequency drives that wells one and three, VFDs.
VFDs.
I'm not gonna forget those terms.
Those were put in and are working well, they also had to put in a new panel at well one. They had the wet wells cleaned at the wastewater treatment plant, which is part of our normal process out there. We do have to send in what's called a DMR, and we did have one exceedance, it's called affluent DOD. I don't know how many people know this, but when you pour sugary sweet things down your sink in large quantities, it messes up the wastewater treatment facility. And when you put things down your toilet, down your sink that shouldn't be, it can mess up the wastewater facility, and that is what happened, we had a business that dumps a, a large amount of sugary substance in our wastewater treatment plant, which then put us in exceedance of what we were supposed to have at the wastewater treatment plant. So after the research, they found that, they did notify within the DMR, but if we have too many exceedances, we get penalized, the DNR will charge us and fine us. So be careful what you put down your drains. I guess that's the best way I can say it, if you don't know how to dispose of something, call wastewater treatment plant, they can help you with this to make sure it doesn't cause. And granted, the majority of it from our homes is small, but being conscious of it, if everybody says, well, that doesn't pertain to me, we're all gonna do it, all of a sudden, we have a, a large problem. So, um, let's see, I think that's all I have at this point in time. We do have a resolution in regards to capacity agreement, capacity agreement has to do with this picture that we gave you. In building this, we have a large company here in town named Sensient. Sensient discharges a lot of water, a lot of wastewater, and we, they pretreat that, and then the rest of it comes to us, and because of the large amount of water they wish to give to us, we said, well, that's fine, but you have to pay your share. And so that is what this capacity repayment agreement between the Juneau Utility Commission and Sensient Flavors. We've had lots of conversation with them, and are coming to the point that we're moving forward, and this is what we're, we're handing to you as far as the agreement, it has been looked over by our attorney. There is a question that we need to ask you about, though, there is nothing in here about the percentage, and our understanding is supposed to be thirty-four point one percent.
Right, and that's what's changed now in number seven. So if you look at number seven, it's further agreed that the treatment facility construction cost specifically connected with Sensient's wastewater shall be allocated in regard to the total cost between Sensient and Commission, and Sensient shall be responsible, and does hereby agree to reimburse Commission for said cost of construction on a monthly basis over a period of time consistent with the ultimate funds borrowed for the project. As an example, if the funds borrowed for the project are over a twenty-year term, Sensient's repayment will also be twenty years. In no case shall the required payment be less than the initial term of the borrowing for the project. Sensient shall be responsible for the actual percentage of debt service costs connected with Sensient's wastewater. Currently is estimated that Sensient shall be responsible for thirty-four point one percent of the total project cost. So that's added in there now, now I did say that's the current estimate, so it could actually vary, but the whole idea is they're responsible for all the costs associated with them. But maybe it will be real close to that, thirty-four point one, maybe that's exactly what it is. But, but no, you hadn't seen that, because when you had your meeting, that was not in there, that wasn't in there until this email came through at some point this afternoon.
Yeah, and I didn't get to the email, so I apologize. Thank you.
Sure.
So that is what this capacity repayment agreement is, that we're looking to forward to them. And move on from there. So, this has to be read correctly.
Well, I just wanted to clarify something, because I asked Lori about this, because there was, there's no dates in here, and I said, is this something that's being passed by council, or, and she told me that is just for review at this point.
That's my understanding, because we don't have final numbers, Sensient was, and it's not signed by Sensient yet, so because it's not signed by Sensient, it's not this day of, those dates will be filled in once something.
This is essentially the contract that the city is asking Sensient to enter into. They haven't yet agreed to this, but they will need to agree to this, or something probably close to this, because you need to make sure that you're recouping all the costs from Sensient. And so, but it does need to be presented to them, but we don't know what day they're gonna sign and approve it.
Does that answer your question?
Yep, I just wanted to verify as well, that we were on the same page.
My recommendation is that the city should be indicating that this is what they're looking for in the contract, and that they give the authority to present this to Sensient, and then we'll see how Sensient responds.
Which is the purpose of this approval right now.
That's what I thought we were doing tonight, was that the utility forwarded it to the city for approval, and then it would be forwarded on to Sensient's.
Right, so as far as what the city should be doing is deciding whether or not you're gonna approve this, and then approve it to be sent and provided to Sensient.
So we read this whole thing.
You want me just to read it?
You can if you wish, I don't mind reading.
Sure, I wrote it, so I might as well read it. But what I did is I did start with a draft that had been put forth by somebody else, and then revised it some. So, it's a capacity repayment agreement between the Juneau Utility Commission and Sensient Flavors. You have Sensient's address, this capacity repayment agreement here and after referred to as agreement is made and entered into this blank day of blank twenty twenty-two by and between the Juneau Utility Commission, here and after referred to as Commission, with its principal office located at one hundred Lincoln Drive, Juneau, Wisconsin, five three zero three nine, and Sensient Flavors LLC, here and after referred to as customer, with its principal office located at fifty-six hundred West Raymond Street, Indianapolis, Indiana, with an industrial processing plant located at three thirty South Mill Street, Juneau, Wisconsin, five three zero three nine, here and after referred to as facility. Whereas the Commission has been created pursuant to the provisions of section sixty-six point eight oh five Wisconsin statutes for the purposes of owning and operating a municipal wastewater treatment facility, plant located in the city of Juneau. Whereas the customer is a significant industrial user, as that term is defined in the Commission's sewer use and user charge ordinance, here and after referred to as ordinance, with respect to the customer's operational impact at the facility. Whereas is necessary due to the requirements of the DNR for the state, of the state of Wisconsin, for both parties to provide for adequate wastewater treatment facilities for industrial and municipal wastewater, and a significant portion of the treatment plant is being constructed for reserve capacity of Sensient. Whereas Sensient is a major industrial user of the system, and its repayment of debt service. of debt service on major construction projects is prudent, necessary, and critical to securing long-term financing for the plant. Whereas in the, is in the Commission's responsibility to provide certain protections to city residents related to being protected from unpaid debt service associated with capacity constructed for the sole purpose of serving the wastewater of the customer. Whereas it is both prudent and appropriate to ensure that user charges cover both the operating costs and debt service costs associated with the plant. Now therefore, one, is agreed the Commission will take necessary steps to expedite the preparation plans, designs, and detailed specifications of the wastewater treatment facility upgrade and reconstruction and that the Commission along with the Department of Natural Resources shall be responsible and have the final authority and determination as to the location of treatment site, size and specifications of the upgraded and replaced treatment facility. And two, is further agreed the Commission will commence efforts for securing available state and federal grants to offset construction costs of the plant. And three, is further agreed the Commission will be responsible and have the final determination as to the method and the terms of financing. And four, is further agreed the Commission shall be responsible for operation and maintenance of the plant using prudent and appropriate treatment practices as it seems appropriate. And five, is further agreed the Commission shall cooperate with Sensient in the planning, design, construction, and operation of the plant in order to adequately plan for and accommodate the disposal of Sensient's wastewater based on Sensient's future forecast of wastewater loadings requested and contracted for. And six, is further agreed that the plant will be constructed, will be so designed to facilitate the treatment of Sensient's wastewater. And seven, is further agreed that the treatment facility construction costs specifically connected with Sensient's wastewater shall be allocated in regard to the total cost between Sensient and Commission, and Sensient shall be responsible and does hereby agree to reimburse commission for said cost of construction on a monthly basis over a period of time consistent with the ultimate funds borrowed for the project. As an example, if the funds borrowed for the project are over a twenty-year term, Sensient's repayment will also be twenty years. In no case shall the required payments be less than the initial term of the borrowing for the project. Sensient shall be responsible for the actual percentage of debt service costs connected with Sensient's wastewater. Currently is estimated that Sensient shall be responsible for thirty-four point one percent of the total project cost. And eight, is further agreed that facility construction costs to be reimbursed represent a payment for the reservation, reservation of capacity in the plant does not indicate a pro rata purchase of facilities by Sensient. The Commission or any assignee will continue to own and control one hundred percent of the wastewater treatment plant. And nine, is further agreed that Sensient will bond itself so as to guarantee the construction costs allocated to it will be paid as set forth above. Whether or not they continue to use the plant during the period of time that the indebtedness exists, said bonding arrangements to be approved by Commission. And ten, is further agreed that this agreement must always comply with state and federal guidelines. Situations whereby guidelines require certain upgrades or modifications to the wastewater plant, these upgrades or modifications will be made and subject to this agreement, both in terms of creations and daily limitations, capital cost recovery in operation, and maintenance expense recovery. Eleven, is further agreed that this agreement shall be subject to the approval of the lending institution and/or financial borrowing ordinances necessary to finance the construction of the plant. Twelve, is further agreed that the term of this agreement shall commence as of the date of this agreement and shall expire upon full settlement of debt reimbursement payments by customer. Thirteen, is further agreed that this contract is granted to the customer for the process activities specified herein. Customer may assign or transfer its rights and obligations under this contract in whole or in part at any time without the prior written consent of the Commission provided such agreement is to an entity which owns substantially all of the assets used to operate the facility and further provided that said assignee assumes the obligations of the customer pursuant to this permit, including those then existing and that may arise thereafter. Commission may require such assignee to execute such agreements of assumption as may be reasonably required to effectuate the foregoing. The customer shall inform the Commission in writing of any expected assignment in or less than sixty days prior to such assignment. The assignment is to an entity other than the one set forth above and the Commission's prior consent thereto is required and the Commission shall not unreasonably withhold its consent to such an assignment provided that any assignee of the permittee is subject to all of the terms and conditions of this agreement. Bypass, the permittee shall comply with the provisions of forty CFR, that's a code of federal regulation, section four oh three point one seven, regarding any bypass as that term is defined therein from the facility. Fifteen, is further agreed that the permittee agrees to the repayment terms for their pro rata share of the capacity attached here to as exhibit A. Is further agreed that this permit is issued on the condition that the customer accepts all of the terms thereof and shall not be effective until acceptance by the customer, which acceptance shall be evidenced by the signatures of the authorized representative of the customers below. And then there's a place for it to be signed and dated by the Commission, Juneau Utility Commission, Daniel Wegner, Mayor, and then dated and signed by Sensient, John Long, President. And then that's what we have. And then we'll need eventually the exact exhibit A.
I would move to move forward with this capacity repayment agreement between Sensient and the City of Juneau.
I'll just move around to a second.
Second.
Second, by Maros. Any further discussion?
Anything you want to add?
I think it's a good agreement. I think you should, my recommendation is that you approve it and then get it over to Sensient and hopefully there'll be an agreement. There could be some minor changes that they propose, but I don't think you should deviate really substantially at all from what you have here. And the whole idea is that they should be paying, you know, a lot of this expansion is due to their waste and they need to be paying their share of it. And that they, they're certainly a great entity to have in Juneau, but they also have to pay their share as well.
These charges go on top of the parts per million and the rest of it, they have gallons, they said.
Right.
The, the plan, the plan for the wastewater treatment though is based upon discussions that we've had with them, Dave, of how much do you think you're going to be discharging? And here are, here are the limits and the capacity. If they were to change the capacity drastically, up or down, it would potentially change the design, but that conversation has been had and hashed and hashed and rehashed and they have finally come to a place with us that they're saying this is what we believe that we would at this point in time have and up to this month. And so that's what our facility plan is going to be.
That thirty-four point one percent was based upon a four hundred thousand gallon capacity discharge. And that had changed from a hun- from three hundred thousand just over the last week. And before the thing actually went into, to writing, it was already altered again. So, you know, they're concerned about having reserved space. As far as the, the footprint you have, but the only thing that's really being, everything's going to be altered and improved out at the treatment plant, but this oxidation ditch is the biggest addition to the, to the treatment plant. That's not out there right now. That's an addition that can be expanded or contracted compared, dependent upon flow. And the clarifiers that are right next to it and what have you, they're, they're all going to be able to be operated independently where before you had to have both of them online at all times. They're upgrading the enters of the plant throughout. As Cheryl alluded, they, that gray box is a, is a maintenance shed that they're, they're, they've got a lot, a lot of equipment that either has to find some place during inclement weather to be stored or even a place for it to be worked on. But we're, that's probably a want more than a need at this point in time and whatever. So we're, we're talking to the two to ten to twelve million dollars here, so we'll have to make those decisions at the time the bids get back. They're breaking those costs out independently, so we kind of know. But we know what we do need. We've already gone on record with the design that has oxidation ditch is the way, way to go. All of our operators have had input on these improvements and I'm thinking MSA is right on board and we're fighting a deadline to be able to get, get grant money and funding for it. So that's kind of why we're pushing to get this moving forward because we pretty much have gone on record as supporting the design right now and the contract for MSA to proceed.
One of the other things to keep in mind, because of the age of our plant, there are certain codes that were not required when that plant was built. So now in order to put it up to the code that's required, whenever you start changing things, that's where part of this additional cost is coming in. They are working very hard. You know, if they're changing one, one area, they're trying not to, just because we have to change a pipe here doesn't mean we change the piping in the whole group. And, and they were very specific with that last thing of, we're going to try and hold the cost and hold the line and look at everything in regards to what can be kept and how can we not change it if it's not required to be changed instantly within compliance of the other requirements or buildings. So...
The proposed plant was designed for a twenty-year life and we're pushing the forty-year mark right now. So we've done very well. The plant is hydraulic, hydraulically stressed right now, that meaning that there's more gallons going through that plant than the plant was designed for. So, yeah, we're, this is not a, a pipe dream. This is a reality setting in that as long as we're gonna be treating waste, especially handling Sensient's waste, something has to be done out there. So we're just not gonna be able to, to proceed to it in the present facility the way it's reported. And I commend the operators. They've done a good job as far as making it work out there. We have not let this plant wear out. We've done improvements throughout its lifespan and whatever, but it just gets to the point where there's so much more new technology that's out there today that's more efficient and requires less power and what have you. This is the time to make the, make the change now and move on for hopefully another forty years, I guess, is what we'd be looking for. So, so it's a good thing. A costly, a good thing, but hopefully we can get some grant money to offset those costs so it doesn't all have to go down to the users. Any other discussion? See none? Roll call vote, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Girls?
Aye.
Woody?
Aye.
Granton?
Aye.
Mr.?
Aye.
Resolution, what was that?
I do not have a resolution. It was just a...
It was a resolution, contract. To proceed to Sensient. Moving on. We've got, we've got a, before we go into closed session, you wanna address the Jewel Street item before we go into closed session? I thought that was gonna be in a new business.
Jewel Street.
Yes. Something David submitted?
Kim Street?
Oh, Kim Street, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's, yeah, you can go ahead and do that if you'd like.
Do you feel comfortable with that, Dave?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that.
Okay. I guess following that contract, you can see a proposal that, for a gentleman that's interested in the old Lindell property. Give you a minute to read that if you haven't already.
Is that what's being discussed in closed session? Oh.
Nope. That's why I thought we'd get this out of the way before we went into closed session, if that's all right with the group.
Isn't this a county thing, not...
Yeah, here's what I would say. You don't have this on your agenda, so you shouldn't be taking any action on it. But you should just make sure everybody's aware of it and has read it and contemplating it.
So the concerns about, after I've read it, was it feels like the county is pushing off onto the city, something that could in the end be a liability to the city.
Um, what, what the county's doing is this property's in a, heading toward a tax foreclosure sale. There's all kinds of back taxes.
Right.
The second problem is that there's apparently tons, I haven't personally viewed it, but I had it described to me and I saw pictures of it. There's just an enormous amount of shingles on the property.
Yes.
So, this county, if you were, what they've done with a few other entities, they did this with Randolph and they did this with a few other places, is you can enter into an agreement to give this property to this person if you chose to. This person as part of that contract can agree to clean it up to the satisfaction of the city, DNR, and any other entities. Then, the problem is when the county's gotten this property back, they've paid Juneau its portion of the taxes, when in fact the county didn't collect those taxes because they weren't paid. So then what has to happen is the county in Juneau would try and enter into an agreement. And in the past, the county has said, look, you have to pay a certain percentage of those taxes back. Now here, it might be the possibility, we don't know that for sure, but you may possibly be able to enter into an agreement with the city, or with the county, that you do not have to pay any of those taxes back. And then if that's in fact the agreement you were able to reach, you might decide that, look, this is a good deal because we don't have to pay those taxes back and we get rid of a property that's a blight in our city. So that's the possible advantage. Now usually what happens in these cases isn't that. Usually what happens is the city ends up paying a decent amount of money back to the county and then enters into an agreement with the person who gets the property and gets it cleaned up. Other concerns that you could have is you wanna make sure that this property gets cleaned up not only to the satisfaction of the city and the county, but also to the satisfaction of DNR. So those are the concerns that you would have. But I think it's good to make you aware of the offer. And then I think you want to do further due diligence to, number one, investigate what kind of agreement could you really get with the county? Could you really get an agreement where you don't have to pay any of the taxes back? And then I, I think you wanna do a little due diligence and check with DNR to say, look, this is what's happening. This person's offered to clean it up, but what position are you likely to take on this? And how do you feel about that? So you at least have an idea of what their response is going to be. And in the end, if it's indeed the case that DNR is likely satisfied with that and you don't have to pay anything to the county and you can get rid of this eyesore, that might be something you would seriously consider. On the other hand, if you end up having, the deal is that you would have to pay money back to the county, or if the idea is that there may still be a DNR problem, then you wouldn't necessarily want to do this. So I think the idea is that you should consider this, think about it. And then my suggestion is that if it is something you would even consider, that I engage in a few more discussions with the county to see if we could really get a favorable agreement with the city. And also investigate this from the DNR perspective to say, look, what's gonna satisfy you as to the cleanup? But if you could end up with a cleaned up property that's a blight in the city, that would be a nice thing. Also, I don't think you can get so aggressive that, you know, this person's willing to do all the work as far as cleaning it up, but in this offer, they're not willing to pay any money. And so, you know, I don't know that you're gonna get anything beyond that from the prospective purchaser, but I don't know that that's gonna best get it either.
And he wants twenty years to clean it up.
Well, I think you have to realize that that type of timeframe is probably not gonna be acceptable. So, and I can't imagine that it would take that type of timeframe. That's an enormous timeframe.
Yeah, that would seem like an enormous timeframe. And, and, yeah, we need more information because why would it take twenty years and how, in fact, is he going to get rid of all these shingles without putting them in a landfill and without, you know, in a, in a proper manner? I mean, I don't know, I don't know how that happens. And, yeah, I, I would have more questions for the DNR. I mean, you can work out something for the county, but, you know, the DNR and, and whether in twenty, well, twenty years is a long time. You know, whether the rules on the DNR are gonna change, right?
Right.
You know, they'll say, well, this is the acceptable, your, your, your property is acceptable right now at this point, but five years from now, somehow the guidelines, the benchmarks... guidelines, the benchmarks have changed and which ones then does the city have to comply with? And then is it going to be an undue burden on the city? I'm, those are big questions.
You may be close to your retirement from the council by the time you review this twenty years from now.
Speaking for Tim Ron.
You're right. Whatever.
What was I thinking?
Really, we understand what happened with him. Anything?
I think he invested and saw how much was there and how much.
He never made an offer, nothing either, no.
My question is, any other time the county forecloses to taxing, city's never involved.
Right.
They always take care of it on their own and this is, I don't want this ever to be ownership of the city of Juneau, not as long as I've got anything to say about it. That's my biggest concern. I don't know, maybe it was a year ago, um, former clerk and myself and Dennis Schmidt, Chair of the Finance Committee, whatever, and, uh, legal counsel, NAS, sat across from each other and I made that statement. I says, they wanted to partner with the city on this. And I said, ha, now all of a sudden fifty percent liability falls into the city's lap and that's the last thing I told him point blank is as long as I fill his chair, I says, the city will not in any, any way, shape, or form take over that property. I says, it's the county's baby and I don't think any sweet talking that they're going to do to anybody around this table is going to change your mind because it's, it's a liability. It definitely is. And, uh, I guess right now I respect this gentleman for wanting to take this over. I've had many conversations with Alderman Grattan on this and I, that was my biggest concern, what happens to him in twenty years? You know, if something happens, he loses interest, walks away from it, you know, who's, who's Atlanta on, you know, and what have you. I have no problem giving him, I have no problem paying back the, the tax money that we might have collected, the city's portion of the tax money. I just don't want ownership of this property. If it helps the county to execute and get this thing moving and, uh, gives him some dollars to operate, though he's not requesting any dollars, I respect that, you know? But I just don't want the city ever even having partial ownership of this thing because I think this is going to be a mini monarch, you know, to clean this all up.
Right, and in twenty years, it's really outrageous length of time.
He's going to do it manually. He does not have equipment to do this, so that's, um, I don't, I don't, like I said, I, I respect his position and his want to do this, but I just think it puts the city in harm's way if we're going to partner with the county or anybody as far as ownership on this again. Like I said, I'd never, I told Dave that, I says, why are they, they're requesting that the ownership gets transferred to the city, then to them, then to him, and I do not want to be in that position. I just don't, do not. I says, it doesn't make any sense because I said to Dave, I says, as long as I've been mayor for the last eight years, there's never come anything that I've ever had assigned for foreclosed property in Juneau, the county did.